Okay. Okay, I'd like to, um, I'd like to bring the meeting to order and ask the girls to call please.
Here. Folsman?
Here.
Dishron?
Here.
Cole Salsar?
Here.
Humble?
Here.
Bree?
Here.
Sowen?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, and I'd ask that all those present stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, um, the board will move on to the public participation portion of the meeting, and Dr. Parker will begin with the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our July meeting. We're gonna start with our safety minute. We have a new slide tonight, so we'll first ask for volunteers to call 911, first aid responders, and anyone who's certified in CPR to raise your hand, please, so we know who those people are. Thank you very much. Just a reminder, exits are off to my right, my left, and the AED machine is in our main hallway. It's the busy time of summer where we're always asked, "What's your enrollment?", and we're currently at 4,386 students, which is 25 more students than last month when we updated the board. Uh, we have 78 fewer students than at the end of last year. I anticipate that number is gonna continue to grow, um, and we could still possibly need to add one to two more sections at our elementary buildings. Had numerous administrative openings for the coming year, and, uh, the board hired Wes Wolvan as our new principal for Dunlap Middle School at our 5:30 meeting, so I would like to welcome Mr. Wolvan back to Dunlap. He was here a few years ago as our assistant principal here at the high school, and he's actually over right now, meeting the staff, um, at Dunlap Middle School, so he's excited to get started. I'd also like to introduce Katie Jennings. I'll have Katie wave and stand a little bit. So she's our new curriculum specialist, and we like to welcome her to the district. She's actually been in and out of the office all summer, um, getting ready for school to start. The administrative team will have, um, a back-to-school admin meeting on July 31st, and, uh, it'll be nice to finally have the team settled and, and ready to start the year. Last week, we had our two technology coaches, Stephanie Pitzer and Jake Brosman. They had a full day of training. Uh, we brought a technology coach here from New Lennox, Illinois, and she's actually been a technology coach for the previous 12 years, and it was a great day spent learning, being able to prepare documents, presentations for the upcoming year. We're confident that they're gonna provide some strong leadership for our teachers in the classrooms. We also had two FOIA requests, uh, from the Midwest region for fair contracting, forbidding information from seal coding bid process, and another request, uh, also from ideal environmental engineering, and we also had another FOIA request from the Chicago Lawyers Committee for the 2015-16 Dunlap High School Student Handbook. So that concludes the superintendent report.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, it is time for public participation. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, and if you could, please sign in, and, uh, I'd like to, uh, explain, uh, our policies. Before addressing the board, I'd just like to remind you about our process. Per Board Policy 2230, we ask that when addressing the board, please identify yourself and be brief. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. The speaker is asked to please conduct oneself with respect and civility towards others. Individuals less than 18 years of age are permitted to address the board accompanied by his or her parent or guardian. The board typically does not engage in two-way conversations during the public participation portion of the meeting. Any follow-up response will be addressed by the administration at a later date. To be respectful of others and to protect confidentiality, complaints against individual students, staff members, or board members, either named or unnamed, shall not be orally presented to the Board of Education. Such complaint should be put in writing, signed by the person or persons making the charges, and delivered to the Board of Education Secretary. So at this time, um, if the first person would like to, uh, come forward, sign the public participation sheet if you've not already, and then, when you come to the podium, please begin by speaking into the microphone, stating your name and the topic you'll be addressing. So, who wants to go first? Okay, thanks.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Rusk, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the lacrosse program, all the parents, and our incredible athletes. I have been a member of the Dunlap community since 1999. I have two boys who have gone through, one just graduated, and I have a rising sophomore, um, here at Dunlap High School. About six years ago, some incredible athletes decided to pick up some sticks and play the game of lacrosse. Every time I'd say, "Oh, my son plays lacrosse", I'm like, "You know, that game with the sticks", none of our, none of these students had, incredible athletes, had ever picked up a stick here in central Illinois. And they have grown this program to an incredible, have just done incredible things to grow this program along with the, um, coaches and parents that we have, um, throughout this community. So this is a homegrown sport here in, in central Illinois that's made itself from the East Coast out here to the central in Illinois. Um, in 2015, our varsity was 22 and 2, and a club state champion. Remember, these boys had only played for six years, and no one knew the, the sport before this. In 2016, our varsity squad was 14 and 3, and finished 8th out of 50 IHSLA B-division programs, which is the program that we're in now. 2017, we were 12 and 4 for our varsity team, finishing 13th out of 50 IHSLA B-division programs. In both 2016 and 2017, our team advanced to the third round, which is the Sweet 16 of the IHSLA program. Again, just only six years with these boys having their sticks in their hands. In the last four years, we've also had many, uh, receive a college scholarship for their abilities in lacrosse. My son is hopefully going to be one of them. He is a rising sophomore, and has already got recruiters knocking on his doors for them to play, for him to play lacrosse for them. This, us moving into, um, IHSA as a lacrosse sport is very, very important for these, um, fine young athletes. We are at the point we need to take it to the next level for these boys to be able to complete scholarships and, um, just increase our visibility as an incredible, at the many athletes we have here at Dunlap High School. This past weekend, I wanna add, we've got many players that play on the travel team, um, for Illinois Wesleyan's. Many of those players have already accepted scholarships to play Illinois Wesleyan, my alma mater, by the way. Um, and we did win the U-19 championship there. Many of the players are Dunlap players, and I'll add, the last two winning goals were made by two of our rising sophomores here this evening. Um, so I just want to have your vote tonight for this program and to, um, become part of the IHSA for lacrosse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, who's next?
Hi, I'm Kathy D'Souza. I am a mother of four. My eldest just graduated, and I have a rising sophomore, seventh grader, and a fourth grader. So it's the fourth grader who is the lacrosse player, three girls and a boy. Um, we moved here in 2003 from the East Coast. We moved here with the two oldest children and added two native Peoriaans after that. I would consider myself a, a lacrosse parent because it's only been our second year here. But I decided to take on the job of the director of the league because Brent Johnson could not handle it with his regular job, because it really is a job to handle the league. So, when I started this past fall, it was just managing, scheduling games, and making sure the practices were scheduled, and finding places to practice, and where we're gonna do our games. But since then, I've tried to expand it because what I've realized is that people don't know about lacrosse, and I sent you an email earlier today. Um, what's, what you need to realize is that the kids are the ones who wanna play the sport. The parents have no experience. As I said in my email, my husband grew up playing lacrosse, and I think he's the only one on the entire team who has. My son's the only parent, or only child who has a parent who played lacrosse. So every child in this, this league is going to YouTube, they're going, and finding exceptional resources to teach their parents how to play, and then we have coaches who only started coaching because the kids wanted to play and we needed coaches. So, for example, this year, Ron Worsley, we needed a U-13 coach, and I, I sent out beautiful pictures and tried to plead, and, um, he volunteered, and he's a football coach, and this is his son's first year, and his first year ever watching lacrosse. So, people are incredibly enthusiastic, and I, I want you to realize that we're growing the base, and we are strong enough. We have a huge amount of seventh and eighth graders because those are the ones that started quite a few years ago. But it's just visibility, so I'm going to have, we're ain't gonna be in the PE class for one day in the week of Jan, um, August 21st. So, I have, um, high school kids from Notre Dame, because I'm the only ones not in school, um, coming to help. It's a lot of organization, but after that, we're gonna have a free Play Lacrosse Day with Washington over on their fields, and that's gonna be all Peoria Y, because I don't know if you noticed, but we're the only league sport that allows non-Dunlap participation because no other teams are available, um, in the area of the other schools, Peoria doesn't have any, it's only Washington, Morton, and Dunlap. And we're the only program that is not funded by the park districts. Um, so Washington and, uh, Morton both have facilities that they get to use, and they, they don't have to pay for because they're part of the park district. So we have a lot of funding issues, space issues, and despite that, kids keep coming back. And then, the, the last thing for the fall to increase our visibility after these two events is to, um, provide some more fall clinics on Sundays. Again, finding space is an issue, but, um, the intention there is hopefully to get the smaller kids in elementary kid school to be interested, and they are, once they see it, and we're playing at the yard in the winter, and all the baseball kids would come and say, "What is that?", and so, and so, they're really interested once they see it, and I don't know if it's just boys and sticks, but anyway. We are gonna start a girls' team, too. So, that's, the plan for this year is exposure, and then preparing them, and then playing again, and I expect we probably will add a good 30 to 40 kids between the girls and the new boys, so I think the basis is there, and it'd be nice to tell them that there is a place for them to go to continue their development. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more.
As loud as I talk, I don't know if I'll make this microphone. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, board. My name is Thomas Chester. I came to the Dunlap area in 2001. I have three children that have come through the Dunlap school district. My daughter Madison is on scholarship right now because of the academics and of the amazing theater we're in here at the Dunlap. It's kind of interesting how Dunlap and prestige, the top class, has really been the theme. Well, I don't want to expound much, but we only have a few minutes. I wanted to thank Kathy, um, for talking about the history and success of our program because it has. In the seven years, we have embraced excellence, and our, our record shows it. We have, most school districts downstate are looking our direction as far as how we can embrace, and this is the fastest-growing sport of sporting in the United States, and the way that this community embraced it is excellence, and that's what I see in the Dunlap community, and that's the reason we moved in 2001, whoever didn't do that. Talk, and I want to thank Kathy as well, talking about our feeder program because it is, it's established. We have kids under helmet, plenty of kids that want to, and we're giving the opportunity to pick up sticks, as will guys and girls. We're very committed to that. I think the last time I was here at a meeting, one of the questions that was posed to me is, "Do we have a feeder program?". We have a very, very solid feeder program, and we know it's growing. But really, the reason that I'm here to talk tonight, quite honestly, is just, bottom line is, we don't have time to wait. We need to make a decision as far as what we're going to do. This community is ready for lacrosse. We have got a community that has embraced it, we have incubated and grown it, and these gentlemen back here are playing at level that they are competing and winning in Chicago. What Jenny mentioned, that this weekend, that was the All-Chicago Windy City Tournament. A bunch of kids from central Illinois committed to go play at Illinois Wesleyan, took the entire tournament. Our, our class, I have to tell them from our older guys, of the five kids that graduated, four of them went on to play lacrosse at the collegiate level. The fifth one was given offers, but decided that he had other things he wanted to do. I mean, I would, I would, I would press that to mind how many scholarship opportunities we have. It's estimated that nationwide, around 17% of all high school kids playing lacrosse will play at collegiate level. So, it's an opportunity for the kids. It's something that we wanna probably give to the kids, we wanna promote to the kids. You have a partnership, and I apologize, and I'm kinda glad, I had 12 families saying they're on vacation, they couldn't make it tonight, but I'm kinda glad they didn't because I don't think we'd have chairs. But what you have is, we really need to get past the if and get to the where and how because we need to set leagues. Katie Kazaway, is it Kazlet or Tas, I, I can't pronounce.
That sounds fancy.
Fancy, I'm gonna clear. Anyway, she's got a job to do. We got things that we have to take care of, and we need to get on our way so she can set up leagues, we can set up affiliations, we can talk about, uh, other schools that want to come to Dunlap and be a part of some sort of cohort. So I guess where I'm at now is, I'm, I'm a, I'm a consultant, and I consult orders all the time in my job, and it's, having the information and moving forward is where you're at, and when you, you're done with phase one, it's really time to go move on to phase two so we can focus on getting the planning so we can go forward and be, and carry the success and the excellence that we've had at IHSLA, because you understand, IHSLA is the way to win this year. It's not like we can stay. It's leading, and all the teams are going IHSA. So, we really need to make a decision so we can get on with this partnership. Every one of the parents here, when we first talked and met with leadership, it's like, "Well, there's gonna be some costs to find it." No one said, "Problem, we, we understand there's gonna be an extra cost to us without dropping an eye, batting an eye, we, how, pull our checkbooks out, how much?", we're used to it. So you have a partnership here that I hope that we can move forward and, uh, hopefully make a decision in favor. I want to also get to thank Kathy, and I want to thank Jenny for doing this. We've got an excellent program here, and we really wanna continue the progress of it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? Okay, that's okay, you can do so now.
They moved me.
That's okay.
Thank you. So, I'm not much of a public speaker, but I wanted to come here today really because my son just graduated, and if it wasn't for lacrosse, he wouldn't have this scholarship. Can you hear me? Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe you can put it down. And could you state your name, please?
Dartrid.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
And we have three boys. We moved here in 2005, and literally have gone from Dunlap grade to Dunlap middle to now the high school. And my oldest goes to ISU, he didn't have the opportunity, but he played football, and you literally have to be a darn good player sometimes, you know? And he was good, but he was a little smaller. Nicholas, who's here, had began playing football in freshman year, did very well, but I'll tell you why. Freshman year, he picked up a stick, and that's what she talked about. He fell in love with the sport, and that's really why I wanted to talk to all of you. This is a sport that, once they start playing, they just get better and better. My son has just accepted a scholarship to Saint Mary's University, okay? And he's a fantastic student, but he's a really good lacrosse player. He went from not knowing anything about the sport to all of a sudden excelling in, and if it wasn't for our program and our wonderful coach, he wouldn't have gotten as good as he is, you know? So I really wanted to make sure all of you knew that this was such an opportunity, and it's because we're here at Dunlap. You know, without this opportunity, he is the only one, she talked about, there was five children that had just received, you know, had graduated. Four of them received scholarships. Nicholas decided not to go to Ole Miss unfortunately, but he, he went to a Catholic university, and he is, he, the scholarship was there, so he accepted it, and he's doing so well. He, he begins there next year, and I just, I mean, this, to our family, unfortunately, like my other son does not play lacrosse, he's a basketball player, and hopefully he'll have that same opportunity. But if it wasn't for lacrosse, he wouldn't have had this opportunity. He would not have played in the collegiate level. So I wanted to really let you all know, and I wasn't gonna speak tonight, I was figuring nobody's gonna be here to support, but it's so important for all of you to know how much this sport has meant to us in our lives. He's played four years and got a college scholarship, guys. It's incredible what our, our team can do, and I know it's because of these wonderful coaches that we have, and now we have this great feeder program that's going to move us to that next level. We need to move to IHSA in order to continue to grow. So I really just wanted to give you my heart and, and let you know how I felt. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we will conclude the public participation portion of the meeting, and we'll now move on to the information and discussion items. The first item is the school activity account reports. They're available for the board's review. Are there any questions? Okay, next, we have information regarding the school treasurer position and district investment practices, and that's available in your packet for review. The board will now discuss the outstanding questions in the document, and Mrs. Beverlin is here and available to answer any questions. Does anybody have any questions for her?
I have a general question. So we're gonna then follow up on a later meeting with this overall, right, correct?
I think it would be good to have a finance committee meeting and maybe discuss.
Right, that's what I kinda thought when we emailed, right?
That's what I would recommend.
Yeah. I, and I just wanted to make that caveat.
If that's okay with you.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay. I think there's just a lot of things.
Yeah, absolutely.
And are, is there anything that you would like to hear from us tonight?
I don't think we need anything in the meantime. I would recommend we get a meeting scheduled sooner than later, so we would plan something out to you tomorrow as far as dates, and hopefully get something next week or two. If that's, if that's good.
Okay. Okay. If there are no other questions, okay, we will move to, to item C. There's information regarding the CSCI contract for 2017-18. It's available in the packet for the board's review. Dr. Parker is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? Okay. There's information regarding the balance scorecard in the packet for the board's review. Mrs. Bowman and Dr. Parker are available to answer any questions. Are there any questions regarding the balance scorecard?
I, I had a question on the summary. Basically, uh, we were talking, oh, no, I'm sorry, it was the, the, uh, the survey, the employee survey for page eight, where they were talking about the, um, employee satisfaction with various departments. I was curious for the percentages. Was there a survey that was given to the board that perhaps was viewed before I came on the board?
Harris Poll. The Harris Poll was here years ago.
No, I'm talking about the.
What about that big survey they were creating? The Five Essentials?
Yes, I, I'm looking at 14, where they're talking about Department Leadership Team Survey Questionnaire data.
Are you in the balance scorecard?
So it looks like.
Yes, balance scorecard.
13, 14.
The last page of. Page eight. Transportation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was 14.
I had it called to 4-0.
Okay, okay.
4-14, where it talks about the effectiveness of department. I was just curious, the percentages for those two departments, athletics and transportation, it seems like lower percentages. I was just curious if on that survey, there were, there was feedback from perhaps, um, the employees, maybe we could get more information in the future.
I believe there was a spot for comments on there, so we can go back and take a look at that.
Yeah, maybe we could take a look.
Those have been, those surveys have been turned over to the directors of those departments.
Okay, okay.
Go address those.
I was just curious.
When they get started.
All right, and then at the very end, uh, there was a comment about perhaps, um, or, well, I can pass that later as well, as far as the budget, being able to reinstate the, uh, update of the transportation fleet. So I was just kinda curious if that, if we have.
You want to add in your budget?
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
So Heather, it's my understanding then that you're gonna go ahead and forward the comments to.
Yeah, I'll go back and look at those surveys and follow up if those comments related to athletics and transportation, correct?
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Anybody else want any comments while we're on 14? Anywhere? Nope? Okay. Very good. I wanna make sure you understand that that survey wasn't part of the climate survey that went out. We followed up with a later survey.
Right, it says.
Because it's here, the. Exactly.
Team leaders, department team leadership survey data, and I don't recall seeing the department team leadership data.
It's a different survey.
Okay, thank you.
Because we didn't, but going forward, next year it'll be part of this, it'll all be one survey.
Oh, okay, very good.
We didn't realize it wasn't gonna be on there.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions about the balance scorecard? Okay, next, we have the, uh, district level goals. They're available in the packet for the board's review, and Dr. Parker is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions about the district level goals? Okay. There's also information regarding Front Row Education Elementary Pilot. It's available for the board's review in the packet, and Mrs. Bowman is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions regarding this pilot? I had asked about what the measurement would be, and it's, it's gonna be the results of, um, the students from this, the school that does the pilot compared to the other schools, correct?
Correct, and that was, I had more than Banner who wanted to use this program, but we really wanted to evaluate and take a look and make certain that if we were going to be investing in a program like this, that it was the direction we wanted to go as a district. I was actually very, you can ask Mr. Fairchild, I was a little skeptical at first. I'm like, "I don't know if I want another computer program, I don't wanna just be putting kids on and sitting there in front of a computer", but, um, I talked with the teachers, went through a demo with it. Some of the things I really liked about the program are, when there are questions, it's very differentiated, but when there are questions that, let's say, a child is stuck on, it prompts them with a list of students who have already mastered that skill that they can go ask for assistance from, so it does provide some peer interaction and some other features that I have not seen in other programs, and their data seems very strong, so that's why we wanted to try it out at Banner this year, see how it is, and then allow those teachers to share and see if it's something we wanna expand in the future.
And is this, uh, in any way, uh, comparable to like AR, or is it, what's it like?
It's much, um, I think it's better in the aspect that it relates directly to the standards. Everything ties back to our current state standards.
And are they able to move at their own pace?
Correct. They're given an assessment at the beginning to see what their level is in both reading and ELA, and then it puts them into the correct category.
How often do they get a chance to work with a teacher?
That's gonna be dependent upon the teacher and how they wanna, I mean, it's not the core curriculum, it's a supplement, so it's not, you know, it's not replacing literacy by design, or it's not replacing our math curriculum, it's, it's an additional tool that the teachers can use. So, we're gonna have some training for them at the beginning, the teachers, so webinar during a PLC time so that they can sit down, get familiar with it, but many of the teachers have been using, there's a free version, and many of them have been using it already, the free version of it. This really allows for more in-depth reports for the teachers, so they can dig into some of the data than that they get, and really see what their students need, and can then supplement in other ways, maybe not even through Front Row, but through the other instruction that they're providing in the classroom.
So Banner is great. Oh, sorry. Well, so my question is, and, and I'm all for supplemental, it helps kids, you know, get a little further, but I think at our first retreat, we had briefly do everything important, talked about modified ability grouping, so that, for modified being in math, maybe reading, so that kids are more in the same group, yet they would still have, you know, different, different levels within that group.
Correct.
Which would be all the time as opposed to, once in a while, you have the capability of getting on and working and moving forward. Maybe that's not the intent with this, is to try to, you know, allowing kids the ability to move forward when they want to?
That's exactly what it is. I mean, it's providing. I mean, it's providing those students who are already meeting the standards to have an area to excel in, but then providing those who maybe are below or right on target, that they're, they're able to work at their level.
So I guess wouldn't it, wouldn't it be, it would seem to me it would be easier for the teachers to have, with this ability grouping, that they would actually be moving forward all the time, at their rate, you know, at their favorite-
Uh-huh.
Don't we already do that for reading?
For reading, I think they do. We definitely do, and we have teachers who have really been utilizing math centers and doing that same type of thing in math, so-
But it's not all the time.
Correct.
Daily, where they really move forward at their own pace.
Right, and this-
They have to find time.
Right, but it would allow them to move at their pace with this program.
It would, just not like, not like-
Correct, it is not that, no.
Any thought on, in that direction?
I think I've shared my opinions on this before, I'm not a huge fan of-
I guess, because we had sort of talked about it, maybe a different, this would, maybe this isn't the place for that discussion, but we have new board members.
Right, you're, what you're talking about is really taking kids and breaking them apart. So say, for example, I'm just going to throw out fifth grade. That you would take those students and take their differing ability levels, and instead of having a wide range of abilities within a fifth grade classroom, you would departmentalize them by ability and keep them with those ability groupings on a more consistent basis, correct?
Very fluid, so that when they have grasped concepts, you know, if you had a kid who wasn't, he was falling behind in a certain, I don't know, chapter, that they have the ability to move up and down, very fluid, not so stressful.
Right, and I think that's what all of our teachers are constantly working with as far as differentiation goes, and that's where programs like this will help assist some of that. I mean, they want to make sure they're meeting their students where they are, because we want them all to grow and be successful. I mean, that's why you'll see in the STAR data, we're going to, that's why we're looking at growth, that's why we're not just looking at proficiency scores. I mean, we want to make certain that all students are growing and developing regardless of where they're coming in at.
So Banner is going to be piloting this, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and the video link that you sent was great. I mean, it looks like a great program and a great tool for the teachers to have in their toolbox. I was wondering though, I think it's for third, fourth, and fifth graders.
Correct.
So if third and, let's see, so some of those grades won't have one-to-one technology, so how are they going to really be able to-
They will not, but they do still have carts at their disposal within the building. And so I actually just shared with the elementary administrators this week, the different dispersment of the carts, and because all of our buildings have had carts at their disposal, but now because those fourth and fifth graders will be one-to-one-
That'll free up the-
It improves the ratio at those other grade levels. Good questions.
I just have a question too. You stated that the teachers and students across the district have been using the free version of the product?
Correct.
And they really liked it?
Yes.
So are you going to now have to ask them not to use it, so you can have your data study on the use of it at Banner and then the other?
I think I would still allow them to use the free version, because they don't have access to nearly the amount of materials that are, so for example, in the ELA, there's different articles, there's different close reading things that they can do with different nonfiction reading, but it's very limited in the free version, as opposed to the paid version has many more resources.
One last question.
Yeah.
And this is for, do you see this as replacing other programs that they're using, or, or just adding another supplement?
Currently adding another one, but we, I could possibly see it trading out for another program that we have, but I didn't want to make a snap decision on that, I really wanted to evaluate, yep.
Okay, thank you.
And take a look at it.
One last question.
Yeah.
Is this something that could be put online? Kids have more time at home, so maybe perhaps while they're home, they can log into their account, they could really-
Yes, they can log in from home as well.
And you would still have that data for, you still have the data.
Correct, correct, yep.
All good questions.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. We now have, Mrs. Bowman and Mrs. Jennings will present information and answer questions regarding the district STAR data.
All right, so in your packet, you had, I just got to pull it up on the screen here. And let me introduce Katie Jennings to you, our new curriculum specialist, so-
I did take her-
Oh, that was while I wasn't here.
While you were gone, before we started.
Oh, okay. Never mind then.
That's all right.
I was a step behind, sorry, I was introducing the middle school principals. So what we've put together here for you is a graph of some of the STAR data, not some, all of our STAR data from this past year, and really took a look at both the math and the reading, to take a look at where we were as a district. And I've got this expanded here, because it's just a little bit easier to see, it was kind of small when we first put it up there, so if we're missing something that you want to take a look at, please just let us know, and we can definitely do that. So, reading compared to math, our reading definitely indicates the most growth, and that's consistent with our park scores and everything across the district. So that's really nothing significant to point out, but we're kind of going to tag-team and go back and forth here with some information, so.
If, if you're able to take a look at this chart, it's a little bit easier to see. And there's my numbers. This would be where the students tested at the beginning of the year for math. So for the kindergarten, you'll notice that it's zero, because obviously that's when they're just starting. So then you see first grade, and it starts off with the trend to be above the grade level, and you'll see this big jump by the time you reach the sixth grade class and the seventh grade class, and then you'll notice about eighth grade, it levels off. So it tops out the testing system, does that make sense? So then that kind of shows that all the eighth graders are testing above where they should be. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that later. And again, that's the beginning of the year. So then if you look at the end of the year testing, you'll see that that, that top of the assessment data is in sixth grade, so they kind of have topped the chart by sixth grade according to this testing system. Okay.
Why are they only at point eight in kindergarten, when the others seem to have bigger jumps? Is it just because they're at the beginning?
It's, it's normal, because it's, it's math at the beginning.
Okay.
The other thing with the, the STAR assessment at the kindergarten level, it's actually, it's an early literacy assessment, and so it combines the literacy and the math. So that's where you'll notice in the data, we had to pull apart the kindergarten data, the reading, you'll notice we pulled out the phonemic awareness and the-
Phonemic awareness and alphabet.
Yep.
And you're just comparing Dunlap data here, not nation data, because you have a national database to pull?
It's normed, all of the data is normed, a national norm. So all of this, so when it gives what Katie was just showing at the bottom, down there with those grade level equivalencies, that's compared to national scores.
Dunlap just does.
Right, so that's not just us, that's compared.
And your percentiles over here, that's your national norms. And then the other one is your grade equivalent.
National.
Yeah, nationally.
So they're higher in lower grades?
That's normal.
That's normal, okay.
Yep, totally normal. You're going to have more growth at the younger-
More growth, okay.
Just because of the way your brain works, so.
A couple other things that we wanted to share. In math, everybody was performing above the seventieth percentile, so that's, I mean, a great strength there, when you're taking a look at all of that. You'll see everybody's growing from the fall to the spring, it just depends, like you said, at the lower grade levels to the higher. And you can see on there, those actual numbers are popping up, so you can see them a little bit better.
Get it, sort of.
Show all of them at once, and it won't let-
Yeah, it doesn't want to, so. The one thing, I'll let you talk about this one here.
Okay, we have, do you have that chart ready to go? We would like to show you, so we look down here at this grade equivalent for math and reading, and you'll notice by sixth grade, it's already at the top of the testing system. But when we look at our high school park scores- They don't necessarily correlate.
Oh, it's not going to. It's not going to, that's okay, we'll pull it up here in a little bit.
Okay.
The, the difficulty is, with this assessment, it's showing that all of our students are up at the eightieth, ninetieth percentile, and they're very high on this. When you then correlate that to our park scores, as I've shared in the past, when you look at the meets and exceeds categories, we've got about fifty-six, fifty-seven percent of our students meeting or exceeding, which is great compared to the state, but when you're comparing the two pieces of data, when you're taking a look at our STAR data, and then talking about our park data, you know, a parent's going to say, well, my child performed at the ninety-fifth percentile on STAR, how come they're not exceeding on the park assessment? And that's, I guess, in both of our minds of concern we have with this STAR data, it's something that we really kind of want to evaluate this year, and see, is there an assessment out there that might be better for us, or might lend itself, it might compare better to that park data, to make sure that we're sharing and giving a true and accurate picture to all of our families about how their students are performing. Because while it's great to say, I mean, this is fabulous data, what we have here on our STAR, but then when you compare the two together, it's just not exactly matching up. So that's really something we're going to take a look at this year, and see if there might not be a better system out there for us.
So our park data, that became throughout the United States, right? Everyone's taken, well-
No, not everyone is, no.
Because it's kind of split, but you have a pool of other states who-
Correct.
-have park data. So when you take our park data and compare it to the other states, do we still see growth?
We do, we only, the chart that we had had there, you know, we grew by, I believe it was two percentage points from one year to the next, which wasn't significant, but remember the assessment changed also from that first year to the next, so it's a little bit of a challenge. Yeah, we're doing, we're doing well compared to other states and other districts in park, but I'd still like to see our students, our park data is just coming back, we just got an assessment notification yesterday, so it's starting to filter in. I was able to talk with one principal just about how everything was looking, so we'll have that in the next coming weeks and months, but I'll be interested to see, now that the assessment has been the same for two years, where are we at?
So is it possibly just the questions that are asked in the math portion of STAR that might not be quite aligned to the park, maybe they're easier, we're doing better?
Right, and not quite aligned to our standards as closely as the park assessment is.
Are your colleagues in other school districts, do they compare the same thing, or, and are they experiencing the same discrepancy between these two?
Yeah, and some districts use STAR, but some use other programs as well, not everybody uses STAR. Anytime you're looking at data, you always want to look at more than one data point, and so I just, we want to make certain that our data is accurate, and we want to make sure that it's really giving our parents the best picture of how their students are
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, yep.
Now we have information regarding future agenda items that's available for the board's review. Dr. Parker did not receive any additional items. Does the board have any requested future agenda items for the meeting? This concludes the information discussion items segment of the meeting, and now the board will move to the consent agenda. I'll ask if there are any clarifications or discussion items regarding the consent agenda. Okay, if there are no clarifications, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented for the July 19, 2017 Board of Education meeting.
Second. It's the move by Teresa Holthouser, seconded by Cheryl Blue. Discussion, roll call vote please.
Blue.
Aye.
Bozeman.
Aye.
Disharum.
Aye.
Holthouser.
Aye.
Humble.
Aye.
Bee. Aye. Zalun.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, the motion carries. We will now move to the action items segment of the meeting. The bill list and treasurer's report are included in the packet for the board's review. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions for her? Okay. I would ask for a motion to approve the payment of bills.
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of three million, one hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifteen cents as presented.
Second. It's the move by Brian Zalun, seconded by Dawn Bozeman. Is there a discussion? Roll call vote please.
Bozeman.
Aye.
Disharum.
Aye.
Holthouser.
Aye.
Humble.
Aye.
Bee.
Aye.
Zalun.
Aye.
Blue.
Aye.
Motion carries. The district's investment report is available in the packet for review. Mr. Nguyen and Mrs. Beverlin will present the year-end investment report and answer any questions.
All right, David and I are going to share some information. I'm going to talk about more of the district specific, and then David had some charts that he wanted to share with you as well. So we are here, this is the end-of-the-year FY17 investment report. There is some data regarding FY18, just kind of what the future steps are, so I wanted to make sure that I added earlier in the week. So these slides are specifically Dunlap. Our FY17 education fund investment portfolio, that's what we talk about when we talk about the reserves and the money that is in reserves. At the beginning of the year, we had thirteen point eight million dollars in reserves in the Charles Schwab account. Then we moved two point five million dollars into that account earlier in the spring, and then the investment income was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand to bring us to sixteen, a little, sixteen point three million in that account. So that's where we are with growth, so that money has grown, the money in the Schwab account has grown significantly.
What is that percent, you know, our percent return on the investment?
You're looking at a yield roughly about one point five-ish, and then, roughly.
Karen, does that include what's, just one minute, for 2017, the twenty-
That does not, that's in the net, that, the two, it includes the two point five million that we moved in earlier in the spring, but not-
The one point four.
It does not include that's on another slide.
So that would grow to about one point eight and close. Am I ahead of you on the slides?
You're ahead of me on the slides. I got it, no, you're good. I wanted to make sure I kept the seventeen, the, do you have any other questions about this, and then I'll just hear what Brian's talking about.
Sorry.
That's okay. This is the composition of the investment portfolio that I pulled, so that you guys could see how it was sitting. And David can probably explain, if you have questions, can probably explain that composition better than I can, as far as where the money sits and how much is in each area. Any questions?
I think we can save a lot of these questions for the finance committee meeting coming up, it's an open meeting as well, so.
Okay.
Rather than give it a detail on some of the investment functions now.
Perfect.
Am I going to attend that, or?
Yeah. The investment plan for the future, we talked about investing and making sure that our funds were making the best return that we can get, and one of the things was, that we really looked at was making sure that the money was moved into Charles Schwab, as well as taking our cash on hand. We're very fortunate, we have local property tax money, so we get our money really in the first three, three months of the year, so we can use and put some cash on hand. It's been in savings and money market, but we're going to get it moved into a better, a better return. So this is what Brian kind of alluded to in his earlier question, and I put it in here because we, because it happened in FY18. I didn't want to put it in seventeen, it's not going to show on the year-end books in seventeen, so I wanted to make sure that it was. make sure that it was. In the FY17 year, we only expended 95.8% of the ed fund budget. So I moved $1.1 million into the Charles Schwab, the reserve investment fund, and so it's now at right around 17.5 million. And that's what he was-
As of today, it's like 17.25, just to be exact. So rounding up, it's-
But you might have another four to move at some point.
Yes, there's-
Four hundred thousand.
Yeah, another 400,000 to move in. The audit is not done, so I want, until that's done, I don't want to move money and not 100% knowing what's going to happen with state funding. I want to make sure that we have enough cash on hand to weather anything if the state doesn't come through with funding. And then these are the cash on hand investments. This is what I've done so far since the tax payment came in. I did this the end of last week. I put $4 million into the ed fund, into CD's treasury bonds. Operations and maintenance, 1.3 million. Transportation, 1.25. IMRF and FICO, 1 million, and Tork, 400,000. That is $9.2 million of our cash on hand. That is now getting about a one point, between a 1.25 and a 1.3 rating, just depending on which CD it is sitting in. And most of those are, there's, the transportation is in a nine-month CD and the rest of them are in six months. And if we don't-
And how do you do that? I mean, does, does David do that for you or?
I did this. I, this is, these are the capital market accounts at Commerce Bank. So I just went through, I determined what amounts we did and didn't need right away, and then just called them up and said, I want you to put it here, 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 and here. And Lisa and I got about 100 emails of, these are all secured. So these are all held at different banks. So we can only have $250,000 in each one of these, or less at any bank. So they're really all worth about $240,000, so that when the interest comes in, they don't go over the 250 that's FDIC insured. So it's-
And we, and none of the things you put them in are the things that are on the other sides that we don't go over the 250?
We need to discuss that with Karen. I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. And so we just need to touch base to coordinate, just so I don't accidentally buy a similar CD.
Got it, okay.
So we'll, we can, we'll sharpen our pencil on that.
And then additional cash on hand funds will be invested after the September tax payment is received. So there will be more that goes in there, but not until then.
So just as a quick opportunity for the district, it looks like we probably, by doing this, we could stand to gain an extra 200,000 of revenue per year?
Probably between 150 and 200,000, depending on the length that the money can sit in there. Hopefully, it'll sit in there as long as we can possibly leave it there.
And pretty much risk-free?
This is kind, this is risk-free.
We can make 230, about a 230.
Anything less than 12 months, yeah, you'd have very minimal volatility. If you look at one, if you take 1% times 9.2 million, then you're getting, that's $92,000, so, you know.
And then we're talking about, I was kind of getting to 230 with the 35 million of tax payments that we'll have in.
Right, exactly.
So right now, I use a benchmark of about 1%, just to be conservative, or I mean, average it out on, on whatever's able to be invested.
Okay, and you said the investments that are made in new capital markets, are those T-bonds?
T-bonds or CDs, depending on what is bringing the best rate when we purchase them.
Great, great job, numbers. We've got more money in reserves this year. Starting to see some major income on that one. That's good.
It's a team effort.
Thanks.
I just have three charts I thought I would touch base on. They're, they're somewhat messy, but with that in mind, they're not meant to be studied more than just to be presented. This is, for example, a dashboard, if you will, of things that I'm looking at. It centers on the fixed income market, and so there's 13 items here. You have seven red bars that suggest that bonds are going to be bearish, and right now you only have two. So right, and so I look at this as a way to determine kind of where we're at in the, in the economic cycle. And in doing so, then you're able to kind of know where you need to move your, your maturities, if you will, in the fixed income portfolio. So I just kind of, you know, wanted to present to the board that it's a little more than just licking your finger and sticking up the air. You know, we're monitoring these things and that. And obviously, if you have any questions on these slides, that's fine. Next. Then what I thought might be interesting is just present the board, regrettably, it's a, it's a little small, but that's okay. The, what this is, is, you know, when you look at yield, you know, what makes up the yield? And that green bar in the lower left, that's the change in basis points that the 10-year Treasury's had since June, or excuse me, since, okay, since March of this year, roughly. And so, and this is as of June 27th, is when I had this data. So, but the point is, is that there's three things that make up that, that particular change. A change in the growth outlook, which is that first small bar, can see only one basis point or 0.01% made up the change. And then the change in the inflation outlook, which is actually five basis point change, that's actually a lot for that particular segment. And then the change in the term structure. And so my, my point in mentioning this is this is what's kind of, well, these three components are basically what derives when you see changes in interest rates at all. And the fact that the, most of it came from the change in the term structure is, I think, interesting because it basically suggests that bondholders are demanding more return for holding maturities longer and, without gaining the amount, because if you have a 10-year bond, you can hold it for 10 years, or you can buy a one-year bond 10 times each and just reinvest every year. And so that difference, that change in, from buying a one-year bond and reinvesting it 10 times and buying just a one 10-year bond, that, that, that spread, that difference, that's the term structure. And the point is, is that if people are demanding more return, if you will, for holding it longer, it suggests that there's a little bit of risk entering the, entering the market in that regard. And the only reason I'm, I'm throwing that out is because if you look at the top graph there, that line, or the green one, was that, you know, since March of 2017, you could see that the main movement in yields was due to potential economic growth, and, and that's why things were, and that's good, that's healthy. And you can see that that's kind of plateaued at this point, and then you had the spike in, in the term structure to kind of change things. And so that's what the bond market's pricing in, is that they're, they're, they're basically saying that the economic growth in interest rates is somewhat priced in at this moment, but in, in what's been moving it lately has just been maybe risk. Okay, and that brings me to the next slide, which is again, somewhat a messy chart, but you basically have a bunch of countries on the left column. You have high, medium, and low, and that's, and the high, medium, low is debt levels of these respective countries, not in a particular order. And so you can see, and those numbers represent GDP growth. So a little bit of soapbox here for your students, if you want, is to watch what, you know, what is debt? Debt is future spending move forward, right? You spend, you know, you go into debt and then you lock up your future spending, you know, up until a certain threshold. So the point is, is basically that as, as countries have lower debt, their economic growth grows faster. And as you get more debt, which is the high column, you're, the numbers shrink. So if you look at the United States, on average, when we've had low debt to GDP, the average growth rate was 7%, you know, nominal terms. And then if you had medium and then obviously high debt, you have lower growth. And so right now, I, I wanted to keep my charts simple. I could give you five more that kind of painted this a little more clearly, but basically we're in the high column for really all these countries, which is suggesting slower growth. So my point is, in, in that when you're looking at the yields going forward, the Fed's going to most likely raise rates in September. December is a little bit of a question mark, and then two more times in 2018 is what's being priced in. At that point, that will actually be pretty good for the Dunlap School District portfolio, because rates, you know, should be pretty competitive as far as the money market should be close to 1.5, 1.75, which is something we haven't seen in almost a decade. And that being said, but beyond that, it's, it's unlikely that you'll see much higher rates, like yields, you know, money market yields up into 4.5 and 5%, simply because, you know, the growth will probably have that, because of the debt levels that we're currently facing right now, will probably have some overhang. So I just wanted to throw out, just kind of, to try, I'm getting attacked by a bug, forgive me. But the, but the point is, is that I'm, I'm saying as far as where our rates are going to be right now and what might we be able to anticipate forward, I would say that, you know, the next year, you know, you could anticipate maybe another 7, 0.75 to 1% increase in, in yields. And then after that, I would anticipate a plateau.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Last month, the administration presented various options for the addition of lacrosse for the 2017-18 school year. The information requested by the board is available for your review. Mrs. Caslet, Mr. Adrian, Dr. Parker, and Mrs. Beverlin are available, and a couple of them would like to present to the board. So if you'd like to come forward?
Yeah.
He's great. Okay, so after last month's board meeting, I know a lot of people had some just follow-up questions. So I have reached out to many different athletic directors, IHSA. I think at this point, people are probably thinking Dunlap Athletic Director is obsessed with lacrosse. But I did my best to, to get as many of the answers and as much information as I could for you. Some of the things I want to point out, I know a big one was, what do our cost estimates look like as compared to other schools who have already, you know, had it through their school and been paying it? And I'm pretty, so, so pretty comfortable with the 25,000. There were some that were, that were different, but each school is doing it differently. So, you know, some schools might be doing it kind of like we've talked about. Other schools might be providing equipment. Other schools might only be providing replacement equipment. So as far as the numbers that we came up with, I think they're pretty comparable. You know, we came up with a head coach and assistant coach. Other schools might have up to three or four coaches, so obviously that's an added expense. But as you can see, like, I think one of them was around 22,700, and it went as high as 41,000. But again, Homewood-Flossmore has four paid coaches, so obviously that's going to drive your, your costs up. Another thing I want to highlight was the surveys that I sent out, and Mr. Heft and Mrs. De Souza were wonderful to supply me with the information I needed to send those out. If you look at the one that I sent to the, to the parents of the young men who are currently in our lacrosse program, it was overwhelmingly supportive. She did give me some names for some girls to reach out to. I did not, I only sent out to six that were in the Dunlap School District. I did not get as good of a response, but she did indicate that they had to maybe close their registration last year just because of facilities and space, but they're anticipating, I guess, greater interest moving forward with the girls' lacrosse. And then there was one sent out to coaches. That was kind of a mixed bag, I would say, with one of the major concerns being facilities, and I know that's something that we've talked about before. I think the reinstatement of the athletic budgets was in there as well. Another thing that I've kind of looked into is conference affiliation. Obviously, right now, none of the middle line high schools are going to be going IHSA for lacrosse. The most information I've got, and I'll be totally honest with you, right now, I think this is a lot of just word of mouth by athletic directors trying to figure out what their school's going to do. There is, the Lockport AD is trying to basically build a conference, because those schools, the conference that they're in, they're not going to field enough teams to, to stay in their own conference. So they're reaching out to try and, to get other schools to join. He told me that Dunlap has been mentioned. I told him that we would be looking, if we joined IHSA, to get in a conference. When do I think that will happen? I don't think that kind of stuff is going to be determined, and I'm guessing September, October. Right now, in fact, I was at a workshop at the IHSA last Wednesday. I spoke with Matt Trohaw, who is the Assistant Executive Director in charge of lacrosse. He asked me what I've been finding out about lacrosse. And so I kind of talked to him about some of the conversations I've had. They don't have a number right now. And I actually just received an email from him at 4 o'clock this afternoon that was sent out to all the schools. And basically, it said, if you, if your school has a board-approved lacrosse team, would you please go into the school center, which is where we make all of our entries for extracurriculars, and indicate that you will be joining the state series?
Always the same thing.
Is there an ability to discuss conference and determine who would be in that without having board approval and you signed up as IHSA, so you have the flexibility? And there could be some decisions here where you don't want to play teams that are on the Wisconsin border, you know, because you don't want your, it's just not, and that's interesting for kids or-
I think we, I think Katie's, I have a really good relationship with Jim Pronti. Katie's built a really nice relationship with him. He's the AD at Lockport. He's kind of the, he's very well-respected, very influential. And we'd have, that would be where we would go first, the South Suburban, Southwest Suburban Conference. He's a really solid person.
And so would you, so, I mean, would, is it going to, it would help you to be able to talk with him over the next few weeks, or you say the AD's come back on staff in like July, you know, 11-month contract, they'll be back in August, I would think, and you'll start getting some answers that you're looking for and feel more comfortable with where you're headed?
And I have spoken with him a couple of times, and he's given me all the information he can, but he just told me that's all he has at this point. And it's just a matter of when other people get back in and when they are taking this to their boards and when they're deciding what they're going to do, then they'll, they'll get a better idea. This is what he told me.
And this is just balls, you know, if we add the girls, that's a whole different thing, and maybe a larger conference, or if there's a conference for that, because there'll be fewer teams. So just a different perspective.
So your recommendation? Because you guys have been moving, I mean, this has been really fast. You know, you just asked a lot of questions. You guys have done a great job getting as much information as you can. You've got solid numbers, knowing we're not going to deficit, but it sounds like there's a big piece of missing data there. Do you have a recommendation?
At this point, my biggest concern is the number of teams. And I know that lacrosse, they want to play better competition, and I'm a coach, and I totally understand that, because that's how you get better. Because I just don't know that this is a race you want to come in first with this whole thing, because if we were to say, yes, we're in, and these other schools say, well, we've decided we don't want to, will there still be a state series? Absolutely. Like I said, and that was what the email said today, was we want to get a number to be able to give people more information and to start figuring out and getting more details with our state series. So they're going to have the IHSA Lacrosse State Series in 2018. And so I guess that would be my biggest, there, like I said, there's going to be a lot of information that comes out in the next couple of months that I think will be very, very helpful moving forward. And I think a lot of it, like I said, it's word of mouth. I think a lot of people are going to talk a lot more when, when people get back into their office after the summer. I have had a really difficult time getting ahold of people. I, I mean, I have, like Lincoln Way, for example, I've contacted their ADs by email, I've left voice messages, and I haven't heard back from one of them. Because I know that was their kind of a big, I think, do they have three separate teams up there?
I think they have like three or four, I think, one or four.
Okay, okay. So, you know, I knew that was probably a big one, because they were three different teams, and they were in that Southwest Suburban Conference. But I, I just haven't been able to, you know, to get ahold of people there. So I don't know, that would be my biggest-
They're just really good schools, they're really good people, they're really apprehensive, they know a lot more about it than we do, and they're a lot more attracted to those schools for conferences. I think in middle of September, first of October, you will know, you have a great picture of, hey, we may even be in the conference by then. I mean, if that's the way we want. I assume Katie will be up there in those meetings talking about forming a, this and their interest. They're all scrambling to form that conference. We would have an idea if we're in a conference and if we're IHSA.
Well, I'm still comfortable moving forward. There are a couple of things I missed at last meeting. Just some perspective, we have a lot of new board members. So when we hit the last budget deficit, I've heard some discussion about reinstatement of athletics, you know, some was taken away, reinstatement of some of the academics that were taken away. And we can talk about Paul, right, because he's not here anymore? He was kind of the mastermind behind this and was actually kind of brilliant. Some of us thought, well, let's, let's do some deficit spending. Paul says, no, let's cut it all. And we were a little, some of us were a little surprised. And he said, well, this way we can take, take away everything that we, we can, and we can reinstate things as we need them, update them to some 21% regarding. And I think Lisa has done that. You know, since she's taken over, there's been one-to-one, there's been credit recovery, there's been social workers and all kinds of stuff. When I was looking at how this district has grown, I could go back to 2003, we were at 2,300 students. And today, we are at 4,000, what did you say? Well, 4,000. So we've kind of grown 84%. We've expanded curriculum, we've expanded classes, opened sections, but we haven't, I don't, I don't think we have ever added a sport along the way. So we've grown, and yet we have all these kids, and you want every kid to find their niche and choices, right? We don't, it's kind of, you know, when coaches say, well, it's going to take away from my team, I get that, but it's really the kids and it's their choice and what they want to play. So I just, you know, I, I feel it's about time that we, you know, open another sport, another opportunity for some of our kids, since we have grown so much in the last ten years.
Good point. And I do want to make the comment, lacrosse, as, you know, I've said this in the last meetings, you know, they've been here for six years, done well at the club level. It was presented last September to- It was presented last September to, to the, to this board, the numbers. There weren't, there weren't any concerns about this board of any other expenses or any other programs. And then, you know, in April, it's kind of, this brand-new thing comes up, we're not going to do it because of some other reason. I don't want to go there, except that there's too much pitting one against the other, I think. I think lacrosse is ready. They want to know their direction. I think they've shown that they're, it's a great sport for the kids, this community, this high school. My son plays it, loves it, is passionate about it, and I think we're ready to move forward with, to give them direction at IHSA.
Well, I think the bus has left the station. There's no stopping lacrosse, it's just a matter of when we want to jump on it.
I just want to say that I, I agree with somewhat of what you both said. You know, I think it's a wonderful sport for the boys, and I'd be happy to see girls come aboard too. And especially with the Title IX requirement, I think we'll be having both come on at some point. I don't think anybody around this table is in disagreement with lacrosse or continuing to support it as a club or taking it to the IHSA level. I think it's a, it's a when, not a if, first of all. So I think we probably can kind of get that all out. If I'm overspeaking for somebody, let me know. But I think it's more of a when, not a if. So everybody supports it wholeheartedly. To your point, Beth, about, you know, about moving forward and doing that, I mean, I think from what I'm hearing you say, is you've been talking to everybody about this, and you think time is in the best interest of the students. So it's not us trying to, trying to stall or hold them. But if you want to be able to pay, play the best competition, and everybody knows recruiters are going where there's the best competition. So if you're playing those teams, you're going to be seen by recruiter more likely than some smaller schools. And I just hate to step out there and then you actually, by trying to be the first one out there, we actually, to your point, we take the students a step back, because now they're in a conference where maybe they're not paying the competition they had at the club level, because we don't know yet. And the problem is that we don't know. So it's not that somebody wants to stall or hold back lacrosse. We do want to make the best decision possible. And then as far as your point, Beth, about the reinstatement, I do believe the Athletic Committee wanted us to try to see if we could restore what was taken away from the current athletic programs, and that's what the coaches had asked for. And so I think we do at least need to be very aware and listen and look at that as well. So, you know, with Karen, you, I know you're there, and you know, we got to get down the dollars at some point. But, I mean, we went from struggling about adding the boys to IHSA, to finding out through Title IX that we have to then add girls, put a good attempt to add girls program, and then the athletic team surveyed the coaches and they want their funds back. Are you able to do all three of those at the same time, money-wise?
Well, I don't think that's what's being asked. I think the question at hand, three months ago, back in, oh, where's the date here?
Oh, it's not an answer, please.
Yes, based on where we're sitting right now, with the twenty-nine, the little over twenty-nine thousand dollars that we had in contingency, and if the girls would come on and they have fifteen girls at the rate that we're going to charge, we would be able to add the girls and reinstate the sports accounts, their actual individual sports accounts, and we would still have five thousand, five hundred right in there.
Awesome. You worked your magic.
But we, we would have to have a separate, I mean, that would have to be a separate issue that we address.
But we still want to know.
But that's, that's great, so you work the numbers.
And you're comfortable with that contingency?
I don't love the twenty-nine thousand, but it's not deficit. And I said, I wouldn't, I won't, I said, I won't bring you a deficit budget, and I can make, if that's what the board decides to do, I can bring you that opportunity to do what we need to do for our existing programs, as well as bringing IHSA boys' lacrosse and girls. Because my recommendation, if you're going to do it, you really need to do it all. I don't, I don't mean that...
Boys and girls.
Boys, girls, and honestly, add...
Athletic budget?
The athletic budgets.
So which would be a difference?
Right.
I think the, I think not doing that would be, would crush the morale of your existing coaches. The amount of money that's going back to their budgets isn't that much, and it's not worth doing, not worth adding another sport and not giving that back to them at the same time.
Perfect.
Now, I want to say that with knowing at this point right now, right now, there's no funding for education from the state of Illinois, which is only eight, nine percent of our budget, but it's still three million, three million dollars. So that, and I think that's probably where some of the hesitation for some of these other schools is coming as well. They're, we're looking at a bigger picture. Is that going? We won't feel that three million dollars until April or May, but, and we can make adjustments, but I just wanted to put that out there as well.
What's your confidence, though, with the state, the funding formula? With the change that would occur there?
The funding formula that is out there right now, we will not lose any state funding next year. It's whole harmless to maintain what we have, what we have, what we were supposed to get this year. It's whole harmless. So we will not see a loss in that when they actually get everything signed together, assuming that it goes in exactly as it's written right now. Browner's intention is not to make winners and losers, his, it's a Chicago, Downstate beef that they're, that they're working on right now. So I don't see any concern with, when the school funding report comes through, that we will lose money next year.
And with the enrollment numbers that were in the report from Dr. Parker, if those continue to rise, will there be any additional spend that will need to occur?
There could be another section added that, we're on hold right now, two potential sections. One, I believe is about eight students over and that will need to be transported, and one's four. But those numbers change every day, and so it's, it's too early to make that decision, but those are potential additions. One section is in the budget.
One section is already in the budget. It is not part of that twenty-nine thousand dollars that's sitting there. But if you had to add both sections, it would take that contingency down below zero.
So that doesn't come out of the growth?
Yeah, but we, just as we jump in, so we've just, the investment report earlier today, which will look to maybe gain an extra two-hundred-and-thirty grand in investment income this year that we haven't accounted for as well by cash management or investment.
So that could you utilize?
And we had a huge surplus that we just deposited, a surplus from this last year. Dr. Parker, question. So the numbers we have right now in enrollment, is it a hundred-and-twenty-eight less than we had at this time last year?
I think I said seventy...
So it's growing? Because the, the report that we received...
From the end of the year.
End of the year. End of the year, okay.
We started, our sixth day enrollment last year was around forty-five, twenty-eight or so. They were almost at forty-four hundred, so from your sixth day, we're, we have over a hundred kids, but we, for whatever reason, right after the sixth day, we bounced out.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And it's not so much the overall numbers, but where they're landing. So if they're landing, they could regrow, if they're landing their banner, and then their class sizes are drawn.
Exactly.
Thank you, Karen.
So good job. I want to finish with, so, so the administration actually did more than what we asked of them, so good job and thank you. Because the information item that was actually put in front of us was simply to decide between band uniforms and lacrosse. And there were five of us at that time, but said, see if you can make it all work, because that would be really nice. So...
You made all that am and then some?
Yeah. So wow. And just remember, like, because, you know, athletics is asking for things and teachers are asking for things, and it all has to funnel through the correct channels, proper channels, for Lisa to bring it forward, which is what she did in that information item between lacrosse and band uniforms. So thank you for your work.
And I really want to compliment Katie. I mean, she's a brand-new athletic director, and she's taken over, and I've told her several times in the last few weeks how much I appreciate her being here. And I, every time I call, I'm like, I'm sorry, I have another question. And so she has taken it all with a smile, and, and I sincerely appreciate that.
Way to jump in. Well, and beyond just the, what we initially asked, at the last meeting, we asked a lot of questions. And we asked them to turn around within a month. And they already had a list of about ten things that they identified that they needed to have before they could, you know, make a recommendation. And so they were working all of that within a month. So it's amazing what did get done. I have concerns that same as you guys do, as some people have echoed. I am all for the lacrosse, especially to the parents here that are taking the time. And you guys, thank you for all the emails that you sent. You added a lot of depth to the conversation and history, and that really helps surround up the conversation for us. And incredibly proud, I think, as we all are, with the accomplishments and, you know, the active volunteer base that you guys have. It's created, you know, an award-winning team by far. I'm all for it to become an IHSA sport, and particularly with the information that you guys were able to pull together at a really tough time. You know, people aren't in the office, they're not on contract. Our big concern, we were talking at the last meeting, is we don't want to go into deficit over this, you know? And we don't want to pick and choose, and the timeline, we need to do both. And then we really need to respond to the concerns about restoring the athletic budget. And Karen, you pulled all that together. So with the funding there, again, it makes it possible to support lacrosse as an IHSA sport. I'm, I'm in the same boat with, it's not if, it's when. I think it does a detriment, based on my conversation with the club president. I understood it a little bit differently than you did. We had a long conversation, because I wanted to find out more about this conference affiliation, and if it was necessary that you have board approval to get in a conference. So that's where the conversation started. To me, it sounds like we jumped too fast ahead of this as a board, just to do a stamp of approval and put our name in. We could end up, it could be to the detriment of the players. I saw some heads shaking, you know, when I said, so once you're in, that's fine, you can't get out, and is that what the, what the team really wants? And I saw some people saying, no, they, what's in the best interest of their kids. That's still an unanswered question. And again, with the state funding, we only do eight percent through state funding, so we could lose three million. These other big schools up there, who you guys, you know, the team wants to play against, they may pull out just on that basis alone, because they're getting far more than eight percent. If it's not going to harm the ability for Dunlap to become an IHS team this season and in a conference by us not voting yes tonight, then I see no reason to vote yes now. I think we should table it, and you go to the IHSA conferences in September, and you talk to people once they're back at their desks and find out where they are, and I think that's in the best interest of the kids. It's just my opinion, but it's what I'm hearing, putting all the pieces together. And I think with facts and data and the missing piece right now, it's, it's not wise to vote now just to get it done.
Have you, did you express these concerns to the lacrosse people, the timing issue?
I mean, we've had discussions about it before, but since I've gathered all this information, I have not spoken with Mr. Heft about it. No, I have not. So, but this has been very recent. I think I was sending things to Dr. Parker for the board packet the day that it was due, because I was getting phones and emails that were actually being returned, so...
I mean, I asked the question, and I got, I got the, the answer that they did want to move forward, so...
Actually, that's, that's what I heard, they want IHSA designation. If they can't get that, they want to know, but they want that first and foremost. If they can't, then they have to go the other route, and they'll have to do, you know, do diligence to where they're going to play and other things, but...
What are the consequences if we wait?
If you had the option, if you had the option and you knew you had the support at the board level, then wouldn't you want to have that in front of you before you click the button? Wouldn't you want to know that the teams that are going to be able to push your student ahead and be, get the exposure to go on to get a scholarship, were going to be a part of that? You know, if you, if you didn't have to force yourself down one road, wouldn't you wait and look on the information on two streets to decide which side of the street you want to be on? I mean, I, I guess that's what I'm hearing, it just, it just seems like that makes sense.
So if we decided tonight to add lacrosse as an IHSA sport, and say in the next month you find out that there isn't going to be a good conference for us, can then we, can we then take an action in October and say we don't want to be an IHSA sport?
I don't have to click the button until January thirty-first. That's where that February first deadline is coming, so...
So we could easily decide tonight?
Like, if you say yes, I'm not going to go in tonight and click the button. Says yeah, we're joining.
And then we could have another action item, say, but we don't, right?
Right. So if I, yeah, until it's, like, we're entered in the state series.
We, we've had three parents here tonight that I heard early on, I think everyone here on the board heard them tonight, that are heavily involved in lacrosse and speaking on behalf of the lacrosse community. So I didn't hear any of them say, yeah, we're kind of concerned whether or not IHSA or whatever. They, they all three represented, I think, the community of lacrosse are saying, this is where we want to go.
Well, I'm sure it's where you want to go, but you also want to have company there that's going to give you the level of competition that you're looking for. I mean, I, I know we can't talk to the parents, I feel bad, I wish we could have some conversation, but we really, it's not what we can do here from the board level. But I mean, if you have the option, and we, and we go ahead in, and then the other schools don't, then where's that leave, leave us? And to your point, you know, Katie, if you, if we give, and you have the, your next meeting, you have that conversation, and you say, no, we're, we're going with it, and then, you know, it's kind of misleading if we don't then go and do it. And that puts you in a, maybe a peculiar situation, coming back the next month, and other people are kind of making their decision based on what we're doing, and then we say, well, no, you know, we don't want to play you guys, we want to play somebody else, and so we don't do it. I don't, I just think it's the cart before the horse. And if we have time, to your point, and if that, and I guess I want to hear your recommendation going forward. And if you're saying that that's to give some more information...
The question was already asked, so I just want to call the vote.
Well, actually, before we do...
Well, Teresa, I have a question.
Yeah, we have more questions, you can't just...
Just want to hear from Abby, see if anyone else, you know, Abby hasn't spoken to, she may have, you may have nothing to add, just wanted to give you the opportunity.
Well, I think, what I've heard from Katie, and I don't like putting people on the spot, say, you make the recommendation, you make the choice, because I think it tries to give you to do, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I don't want to force you to make a decision when there are so many variables. And I'm sure as an employee, you can go either way, because you'll do what you feel you need to do. But what I heard you say is, if we went forward and some other schools didn't, and you know we don't depend, we depend on local tax dollars, whether we depend on state funding, we're very fortunate in that regard. So you were saying, if we went, went forward with this and other teams didn't, we would still find teams to play?
Even if we're not in a conference, we could remain independent now. Could those teams be further away? Sure, that's why I picked this conference, is because they're closer, and I know that those are actually some of the teams that the lacrosse representative have given.
So these children won't be sitting at home saying, oh, we don't get to play lacrosse because the board decided to make it IHSA?
Regardless of either way, they'll get to play.
Teresa, did you have a question? What are the consequences with waiting until we get that additional information?
No, there are no real consequences to waiting, but...
Because there's no risk that, oh, they can't join a conference then?
There, there's no consequences to wait. But to Ms. Humble's point, we're going to find schools to play regardless, you know? So it's really, you know...
We do get to start earlier, kind of as a more serious...
Yeah, I'm just saying, in October, you're going to have a really clear picture, once those A.D.s get back.
Your planning, your conference.
And hopefully we'll be in a conference by then, and...
You wait till February, you're going to be hard-pressed to get your schedules together. I mean, I, I had coaches that were scheduling a year on, excuse me.
Usually they're three or four years in football, you know?
So, but you were talking September, October? You were hoping to have...
I just feel like that's when a lot of information that we're looking for is going to come out, and, and that these are, that these conferences are really going to be moving forward, and we're going to be having more of that conversation than just, these are the schools that we're looking at.
Any other questions? New issues? Okay. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the addition of lacrosse as an IHSA sport for boys and girls effective with the 2017-18 school year as presented.
I move to approve the addition of lacrosse as an IHSA sport for boys and girls effective within the 2017-18 school year as presented.
I second it. It has been moved by Beth Reed and seconded by Abby Humble. Is there discussion?
Is there discussion?
I just want, I want to have a discussion. I would just want to say that I'm, I'm a hundred percent for lacrosse, and I, and I wanted to work out what's in the best interest of the students, so I'm hoping that we'll, you know, continue, and I know you're doing a great job getting the information, and you'll, you'll make sure that that happens, so thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Dishon.
Aye.
Paul Salzer.
I'm just going to say no at this time, I'd like more information.
Humbles?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zawin?
Aye.
Lou?
I echo Dawn's comments, and Teresa's, I'm all for it, I just, in the best interest of the students, I'd like to, to just table it for two months, so, you know.
Bowdman?
And I'm going to abstain, because we don't have all the information. Thank you.
Okay, motion carries.